Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a city council meeting of the city of Fullsher on Tuesday, January the 19th, 2016. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:06 PM. Ms. D.
Okay.
Thank you for everyone being here. D, for the record, we do have a forum that's present. Ms. Messick is unable to be with us at the seat. If you would, please stand for items three and four. We have our invocation, which will be offered by Tiffany Droscow with First United Methodist Territory in Fullsher. And once she's done with that, I'll lead us in the pleads of the allegiance. So Tiffany?
Mayor, take a moment and bow in prayer, please. Dear Lord, as we come before you, our city council, to address our agenda, may we all feel a sense of unity, a sense of welfare, and that our heads prevail for what is best for the people of Fullsher. May we show confidence in what is good and fitting, and may we also show the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is an honest disagreement. May you continue to grow Fullsher as you see fit. It's in Jesus' holy name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five is citizens' comments, and no action may be taken on those. D, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Just as a reminder, our tradition and rules, we allow three minutes for speaking. CJ does have a timer up here, so if you would, please help us respect that, the timeframe and the courtesy of our guests that we have here with us tonight. First, we have Kim Stacy.
Thank you, and I've timed it. So, good evening. My name is Kim Stacy, and I have lived in Fullsher for over 18 years. I have attended various committee and council meetings during this time, and on Friday, January the 15th, I attended my first ever Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. They were very gracious in allowing me to express my desires for our community. The concern I'm bringing to you today is the event that transpired about halfway through the meeting. One commission member had the floor and was making a comment. I'm not sure of the point he was trying to make because before he was able to expound on his comments, one of our council members, who also serves on the Parks and Recreation Commission, interrupted him. She felt like the commission member was being critical of the administration, so she said, "I'm defending the administration as we are working very hard." I'm not sure if he was being critical because he never got a chance to finish the point he was trying to make. There ensued a verbal altercation, which escalated in volume and resulted in the member resigning from the Parks and Recreation Commission and leaving the meeting prematurely. I want to give kudos to the chairman, Dave Brundrick, for his efforts in trying to calm the parties and regain control of the meeting. However, I will note that in his comments to the commission, he said he felt there was political motivation in what had transpired, and it had no place at the commission meeting. My concerns from this altercation is that we currently have two city council members serving on the same Parks and Recreation Commission, and who subsequently are serving on the same tree committee, which was seated last week. Because city council members have authority in approving and implementing recommendations by the commissions and committees, I feel it is a conflict of interest to have any city council member serving on any committee or commission while they are serving in an elected capacity. Considering Parks and Recreation Commission is an advisory panel to city council, and 40 percent of city council is represented on this commission, you are in essence advising yourselves. So please understand that I'm not calling into question anyone's motives or integrity, but I am concerned about the potential for conflict in the future. Each commission member is required to sign the responsibilities form, which states, "Respect individual viewpoints. Allow other members time to present their views fully before making comments. Be open and honest and strive to minimize political action on issues." The city council member involved in this altercation violated this clause. It was disturbing and disappointing to see this occur. As a growing city with more and more volunteers available to step up and serve, we need to encourage them to serve, not discourage them. I believe it is imperative to establish policies and procedures for service when someone has been seated on the council. They should immediately resign from any commissions or committees on which they are serving. Time is of the essence to make these changes. Thank you for your sign, and may God bless Fullsher.
Owen Bement.
Thank you. Do you think city business is being conducted in violation of Texas law? Or elected city officials or city employees are acting in violation of Texas law? Do you think the citizen members of the Home World Charter Commission have done something in violation of Texas law? What evidence do you have that Texas law is being violated by any of these people? Just because decisions are being made that you don't agree with doesn't mean that decisions are in violation of Texas law. If you have evidence that there are violations of Texas law, you should first go with the city attorney, then TML, more specifically, the legal services department of the Texas Municipal League, then the county district attorney, and finally, the attorney general of the state of Texas. No other elected official is anywhere in this chain of command. You should know this as elected members of the Fullsher City Council. It appears to me that when Mrs. Messick ran to see Judge Abner, the highest elected official in the county, it was to try and discredit Fullsher city officials, impugn the integrity of the Home World Commission members, and cast doubt on the validity of the charter that they had produced. Thank you.
Sherri Bement.
When an elected member of the city council posts on a public Facebook page, such as some of you have, where you state that you are a politician and you have a seal of Fullsher showing on your Facebook page, you should be held to a higher standard. When you posted about a member of the Parks Commission, calling him by name, accusing him of attacking you, as if it was unprovoked, they related that he resigned from the seat, you are using your site to get even with a volunteer, not enlightening the public. In this case, Hannah Messick exposed the nastiness that happens when a volunteer dares to oppose her on the city commission that he has volunteered for and is more than well-qualified for. He was characterized as, quote, "another example of certain individuals who refuse to work with us for the benefit of our citizens," unquote. She is using her position as a council member to publicly embarrass and try to cause among the citizens his name and his efforts on behalf of the city to be thought of as useless. And one could ask, and who are these certain individuals? Anyone who might disagree with her? Then, when I replied on her public forum that she was wrong to attack in an arena where he could not defend himself, she merely suggested that I, quote, "should come to the meetings and judge for myself," unquote. I do not need to come to a meeting to see how volunteers who opposed the city council member were treated. When I explained that getting even in this way was neither, quote, "respectful" nor "kind," which in her post she espouses the way things should be, she removed his name from her original post, though she did not remove the post, as I believe she should have. I strongly suggest, strongly suggest, that she, or anybody, as an elected representative at large of all the people of Fullsher, stop this petty, schoolyard tactic. As she said in her post, quote, "It does not belong to the beauty of the city of Fullsher," unquote. It should be beneath her as a councilwoman, and it certainly will not inspire others in the city to volunteer. I will, from now on, challenge her when I see her on Facebook. She can block me, she can post on her private Facebook groups in Cross Creek Ranch, but if I hear about it, I will challenge her.
Elena Hedy.
My name is Elena Hedy. I'm from Cross Creek. Unfortunately, I don't have that much more to say because people who are talking before me cover everything what I can to cover. So let me just limit my comment. Though I was born in East Europe during communism, and what I am experiencing on certain council people, Facebooks, I found improper and undemocratic. If somebody doesn't agree with opinions, they can block from the Facebook and protect it from posting their opinions. If there should be any kind of questions, as I heard from certain individuals, I made up my story, I printed for you, print screen of the Facebook cruising, so I can access every single council member who has a, I didn't find two people, political Facebook. But if city council member has a political Facebook where she is representing, has a elected official where she is frequently speaking behind the council, and then she includes this un, undemocratic activity, I find it certainly concerning. Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Steny, and I would, I'm talking on behalf of some of the same things that have been presented here today. And I would just implore each and every one of you, as residents of Fullsher, to, when you go out into your daily lives and representing us as a voted-in city council member, that you do that morally, ethically, legally, and not making defamation of character to anyone or each other. I would also request that you be respectful to your constituents and to all volunteers. Thank you.
Did I overlook anyone? Thank you. Item number six is a public hearing. The city of Fullsher, Texas proposes an amendment for the city zoning ordinance to adopt minimum architectural design standards for buildings located within the city limits. So we'll open up the hearing at 7:19 PM. D, for the record?
Noted.
We adopted zoning back in May of 2012. We went through a pretty long process to accomplish that. There have been a couple of amendments to the zoning ordinance since that time. Tonight, or later on our agenda, the city council will consider the minimum architectural design standards, and this is an opportunity, if you have looked at those, or have any comments on it, for or against, or this is your chance to speak up, and you do not have to have signed up to speak now.
Mayor, is this ordinance located, the full text of it located on our website?
I don't know.
Okay. I'll tell you that I wasn't able to find it, but I would like that to be posted. It's actually a fine piece of work, and I feel like we need to have a PDA accessible to the public, so that they can understand what it is the city's trying to do.
Noted. Yes?
I would like to say-
Could you just state your name before you speak, so we have it for the record?
Sorry. Kim Stacy.
Okay.
I was on the Architectural Design Committee, and I appreciate the opportunity to have served on that committee. I would like to say that Laurie Fanté was our chairman, and she did a really good job leading us. And Gary with Kendy Keith, Gary Mitchell, did an excellent job in giving us the guidance that we needed to put this together, a lot of hard work, and really appreciate their direction and leadership.
Thank you. Mayor, advisor of mine, my name is Jeff Roberts. I was also on the Architectural Committee, so I was a council member on that committee, and I think it was an excellent committee. And thanks for the input, Ms. Michelle Gilbert, and Kathy Ward as well on our committee. There's a great care. And Amy Pierce from the Panamanian Zone. So, thank you, Chris.
Any further comments? All right, D, that's the first time I didn't have to stretch it out. We'll close the public hearing at 7:22 PM. Thank you all for your comments, and Gary Mitchell will have a presentation on the agenda item a little later. The consent agenda is item seven. Items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and are generally enacted in one motion. The exception to this, to this rule, is that a council member requests one or more items to be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and action. We have items A through G, and I'll note, item F, we're going to ask to pull that and have a separate action on that.
Okay, Mayor, I'd also ask that we pull item G and have a separate action as well.
Okay. So we'll take items F and G separately?
Actually, we'll, I'm going to take half of G and consider that separately. So I just want to pull that to separate fifteen minutes.
Is that, can we do that, Grady?
Sure.
Okay.
So December one is under consent.
Yes, December one is under consent.
So we have items A through E on the consent agenda, plus, under item G, the council meeting minutes from December 1st, 2015.
I think the motion will approve this.
Okay. We have a item, a motion to approve the consent agenda as described. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Item F is consent and approval of Kiddo's Ranch daycare preliminary flat. This was a flat that we had discussed with Commissioner Myers last week when we had a meeting with him. This is on Rose Lane, which is off of 1463, just north of Tamaraun. And the question that we have is whether Rose Lane is actually a public street. It does not appear to be, and staff is asking that we deny that flat, preliminary flat, at this time, and ask for documentation that the daycare would be located on a public street. CJ, you can expound on that.
Mayor, thank you. I laid out exactly what the staff's request is. The Rose Lane doesn't appear on the county road log, it is not platted or dedicated as a public right-of-way, and therefore, I'm not sure that we can actually approve a flat for any property up there right now. So it's our request that we deny that, return back for information and prove the qualification that it is a public right-of-way.
Did that receive approval?
It did. They weren't aware of the fact at the time that Rose Lane was not on the county road log and known as a public right-of-way.
You said it was, what, about six lots into the-
It's similar lots into the development. What they're trying to do is subdivide a larger lot and the two smaller lots, one with a residential component and one with a daycare, in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
Like about twelve blocks on this.
Do we have a motion? Make a motion to not approve Kiddo's Ranch daycare until the city finds that Rose Lane is part of the county road structure.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
And not approving that, I'm just returning it for additional information or confirming about that.
Well, also, we didn't want to give the, even though it is preliminary, we didn't
want the appearance of approving it in that condition, and then possibly denying it later for those various reasons.
Okay.
Any further questions? Right? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The flat is denied.
Make a motion to postpone item G, December 15th.
I was, let me read that first. Pardon me. Item G, I was trying to think of say, how to say "half G," but it didn't come to me, Grady. Consent and approval of minutes of the city council meeting for December 15th, 2015. Go ahead.
Okay. I move to postpone approval of minutes for December 15th, 2015.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to postpone. Any questions or comments?
Postpone for what?
Correct.
Just to, not our next or regular meeting, just whenever the next meeting comes.
It's, you know, it definitely is a long set of minutes, and so I think, from what I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, council member Grady, but just would like some more time to review that, since there are a lot of details included. All right. All those in favor of postpone the second part of item G, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Item eight are reports. Reports are presented to council for informational purposes only, and no action may be taken on any item contained in a report with a specific actionable item listed under business items. Our first report is A from Severn Trent. Jason.
Good evening. I guess I'd like to start off by introducing Katie Bay. She's not due to Severn Trent, but due to our office at our Westmore Branch, and she got promoted to town manager and train, I believe. So Mark thought it would be great to bring her here and really cut her teeth on some interesting stuff. Not sure if that means he wants her in or out, but we'll find out. Not really much to go over. Cross Creek Ranch, 24 new connections, or new taps. City of Fullsher, we had one irrigation tap in the new areas. Other than that, pretty well business as usual. Still running our Fullsher plant on drought contingency status. Other than that, we're still running with everything we have going on here. Trying to keep it short and sweet.
Do we have any findings from water plant number two? From Alsay, did they get anything back to the ship?
On that well?
Yeah.
All that was supposed to be done, that well number should be installed soon, but it hasn't already.
Okay, yeah. Have they received order and anything?
Yeah. Alsay was going to split the cost. Alsay was sharing the cost with the other contractor that was involved. Cause of failure was not determined to be anybody's negligence. Yeah, that was on board.
Jason, I did not get a breakdown of calls on-
I upgraded that.
Okay. Yeah, I see for city of Fullsher, but I didn't see it for the Cross Creek Ranch.
We had sent two, I think the second one got in a little late.
Okay.
With, Mark had noticed when we sent the first one, but that one cleared on Cross Creek before. So we did send the second one out, and I think it was a little late to get it to y'all's packets. It's actually a fairly calm month, not really much out of the ordinary.
Actually, quite a significant drop. I know when we had a busy November 106 calls, and December it's down to 47, so thank you for that.
Back to our normal. And we're working diligently with Tony to get the data drops and different things going through y'all's new building system. I know the new smart meters are installed, trial programs running, so.
We're just, we've got to refine some stuff on that.
They've already betaed some tests still.
Yeah, well, actually, we've got to refine our propagation study a little bit, so.
But I know we've got meters installed.
You're, well, we're going with the netting, yeah, that we're working with, but Mark, we don't have any, we're not doing radio reads right now.
Right, right.
CJ, can we look at the, you know, I hate to bring this up, but the rears-
Ninety day rears on Cross Creek Ranch?
Yeah.
So that's HOA rears.
Yeah, we have not had a chance to sit down and ferret it out yet, so.
Okay. Just because we're kind of, it's peaking now.
And it's, I think it's still climbing because we have a couple of new ones that came on that are still generating, so it's going to keep climbing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Jason? Katie? Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Report B is from the police department. Chief Seymour.
He right here he is. He's coming.
Okay. I would like to make a grand intercom.
Yeah, you go. All right. The month of December, we had 406 traffic stops, investigated non-traffic collisions, all of them were for minor. We had 34 offenses investigated, and 36 charges were filed on those individuals. And then we had 754 calls for service for the month of December. And then the following reports are breakdown of those calls for service.
Now, is there any truth that that dump truck did turn over because of that banana peel?
That's out of the report.
Okay. All right. I think you did have a coffee with the cop, where y'all focused on open carry. I know that's been a big topic of cities and residents. Did you have, how was the attendance at that?
The attendance was well attended. I would say 30 to 40 people attended. And we visited, asked very good questions. Obviously, there's some concerns, but I think some of those concerns are being put to bed, because I've yet to see a person open carry. And I'm not saying they're not out there, but I think it's just a little education. There's education on what we have to do as law enforcement. There's a little confusion as to what the law allows, and so, we're educating our people as to what to do when we were confronting with those individuals that are open carry, because we want to respect that right, but we also want to ensure that those people have followed the rules and are able to carry. So, yeah, we had a lot of good questions, a learning opportunity for a lot of people.
And just for a public announcement, you know, if you do have any questions on that, I know that the PV and chief have done a lot of research and put a lot of thought into that, so please contact them if you do have any questions. Go ahead.
I know we have some new officers, so can you-
Yeah, I was gonna-
-talk just about our new-
Yeah, they haven't really made it yet, but, no, we did add, we added, I'm trying to remember their names, that's horrible, but, we added Aaron Lundy, who was a transfer from HPD, and we just picked up Luciano Lopez, who is, we spelled again from the chair's office. And then the last one was Raymond Rivera, who comes to us by way of present form. So we have, we do have one physician still till, but right now, we're in the process of training and getting those folks where they need to be. Two of them have already hit the ground running, and have already made a very good impact on what they can redo after the community. So I do have one more, if you don't mind, Dr. Wisdom. Last week, we introduced our new chaplain, and my mama told me that I need to be right by God, I need to sit up in front and do all the things that I haven't been doing for 48 years, but this, I think we did right. And we had an incident a couple months ago where, I guess I kind of drug my feet in making this decision, and I talked, but we had an act, and in this particular time, Dr. Wisdom had offered his assistance and really helped us out of a tight spot in that situation. But Dr. Charles Wisdom is an area resident, he's been here for over 30 years, he's been a member of Clarty for over 50 years, he's well in tune with our community, he's well in tune with the local churches and the heads of those churches, he's a wealth of knowledge, and I just felt that, from a standpoint, from a police department, the direction we're going, that, you know, he offers the external experience and also the internal experiences and help that we may need, you know, in our everyday jobs. So, again, I want to welcome Dr. Wisdom, you know, he's, just in a few conversations I've had with him, I know that he's the right choice. We've already put him through a con-
Well, also, we didn't want to give the, even though it is preliminary, we didn't want the appearance of approving it in that condition and then possibly denying it later for those various reasons.
Okay.
Any further questions? Right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The flat is denied.
I make a motion to postpone item G, December 15th.
Let me read that first. Pardon me. Item G, I was trying to think of how to say half G, but it did come to me grating. Consent and approval of minutes of the city council meeting for December 15th, 2015. Go ahead.
Okay. I move to postpone approval of minutes for December 15th, 2015.
Do we have a second?
Same.
Motion's been made and seconded to postpone. Any questions or comments?
Postponing for what?
Correct.
Not our next or regular meeting, just whenever the next meeting comes.
You know, it definitely is a long set of minutes, and so I think, from what I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, council member, but just would like some more time to review that, since there are a lot of details included. All right. All those in favor to postpone the second part of item G, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Item A to reports. Reports are presented to council for informational purposes only, and no action may be taken on any item contained in a report with a specific actionable item listed under business items. Our first report is A from Severn Trent. Jason.
Good evening. I guess I'd like to start off by introducing Katie Bay. She's not due to Severn Trent, but due to our office at our Westmore branch, and she got promoted to top manager and train, I believe. So Mark thought it would be great to bring her here and really cut her teeth on some interesting stuff. Not sure if that means he wants her in or out, but... Not really much to go over. Cross Creek branch, 24 new connections or new taps. City of Fullshire, we had one irrigation tap in the new areas. Other than that, pretty well business as usual. Still running our Fullshire plant on drought contingency status. Other than that, we're still running with everything we have going on here. Trying to keep it short and sweet.
Do we have any findings from water plant number two? From Alsay, did they get anything back to the ship?
On the well?
Yeah.
All that was supposed to be done, that well number should be installed soon, but it hasn't already.
Okay, yeah. Have they received order?
Yeah. Alsay was going to split the cost. Alsay was sharing the cost with the other contractor that was involved. Cause of failure was not determined to be anybody's negligence. Yeah, that was on the board.
Okay.
Jason, I did not get a breakdown of calls on Cross Creek.
I was afraid of that.
Okay. Yeah, I see for City of Fullshire, but I didn't see it for the Cross Creek branch.
We had sent two, I think the second one got in a little late.
Okay.
With, Mark had noticed when we sent the first one, but that one cleared on Cross Creek before. So we did send the second one out, and I think it was a little late to get it to y'all's packets. It's actually a fairly calm month, not really much out of the ordinary.
Actually, quite a significant drop. I know when we had a busy November 106 call, and December it's down to 47, so thank you for that.
Back to our work. And we're working diligently with Tony to get the data drops and different things going through y'all's new building system. I know the new smart meters are installed, trial programs running, so.
We've got to refine some stuff on that. Yeah, well, actually, we've got to refine our propagation study a little bit, so.
But I know we've got meters installed.
Well, we're going with the netting, yeah, that we're working with, but Mark, we don't have any, we're not doing radio reads right now.
Right, right.
CJ, can we look at the, you know, I hate to bring this up, but the rares?
Ninety day rares on Cross Creek branch?
Yeah.
So that's the HOA.
Yeah, we have not had a chance to sit down and ferret it out yet, so.
Okay, just because we're kind of speaking now.
And it's, I think it's still climbing because we have a couple of new ones that came on that are still generating, so it's going to keep climbing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jason? Katie? Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Report B is from the police department. Chief Seymour.
He right here, he does. He's coming.
Okay. That would like to make a grand admission.
There you go. All right. The month of December, we had 406 traffic stops, investigated non-traffic collisions, all of them were for minor. We had 34 offenses investigated, and 36 charges were filed on those individuals, and then we had 754 calls for service for the month of December. And then the following reports are breakdown of those calls for service.
Now, is there any truth that that dump truck did turn over because of that banana peel?
That's out of the report.
Okay. All right. I think you did have a coffee with the cop where y'all focused on open carry. I know that's been a big topic of cities and residents. Did you have, how was the attendance at that?
The attendance was well attended. I would say 30 to 40 people attended. When we visit and ask very good questions, obviously there's some concerns, but I think some of those concerns need to be put to bed because I've yet to see a person open carry. And I'm not saying they're not out there, but I think there's just a little education. There's education on what we have to do as law enforcement, because there's a little confusion as to what the law allows. And so, we're educating our people as to what to do when we were confronted with those individuals that are open carry, because we want to respect that right. But we also want to ensure that those people have followed the rules and are able to carry. So, yeah, we had a lot of good questions, a learning opportunity for a lot of people.
And just for a public announcement, you know, if you do have any questions on that, I know that the PV and chief have done a lot of research and put a lot of thought into that, so please contact them if you do have any questions. Go ahead.
I know we have some new officers, so can you talk just about our new?
Yeah, they haven't really made it yet, but, no, we did add, we added, I'm trying to remember their names, that's horrible, but, we added Aaron Lim, who was a transfer from HPD, and we just picked up Luciano Lopez, who is, we spelled him out from the sheriff's office. And then the last one was Raymond Rivera, who comes to us by way of present form. So, we have, we do have one position still filled, but right now we're in the process of training and getting those folks where they need to be. Two of them have already hit the ground running and have already made a very good impact on what they can do actually in the community, so. I do have one more, if you don't mind, Dr. Wisdom. Last week, we introduced our new chaplain, and my mama told me that I need to be right by God, I need to sit up in front and do all the things that I haven't been doing for 48 years, but this I think we did right. And we had an incident a couple of months ago where I guess I kind of drug my feet in making this decision, and I talked, but we had an act, and in this particular time, Dr. Wisdom had offered his assistance and really helped us out of a tight spot in that situation. But Dr. Charles Wisdom is an area resident, he's been here for over 30 years, he's been a member of Clergy for over 50 years, he's well in tune with our community, he's well in tune with the local churches and the heads of those churches, he's a wealth of knowledge, and I just felt that from a standpoint, from a police department, the direction we're going, that, you know, he offers the external experience and also the internal experiences and help that we may need, you know, in our everyday job. So, again, I want to welcome Dr. Wisdom. You know, he's, just in a few conversations I've had with him, I know that he's the right choice. We've already put him through a conference that they have locally here in Sugar Land, where I think he's able to make some contacts and learn a little bit more about what the backs and do, so fortunately I'm being scary, but, but again...
Would you like to say something, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I'm very privileged. As the chief says, I've lived here for 28 years, and I've seen, like those of you who've been around a long time, many, many changes, and I'm excited to be a part and hoping that I can offer some meaningful help to our police department, and anyway, I'm just glad to be a part of it, and I thank you for the great honor. Thank you.
These are official police chaplains. That wasn't said.
Correct. First one.
Yeah, first one.
Any further questions of Chief Seymour or Dr. Wisdom? All right?
And I'll have the other officers next out there, so.
Okay. Thank you. Report C is from our municipal court clerk, Valerie.
Good afternoon. So the first thing that I want to introduce is Mariella. She's our new court clerk, deputy court clerk. Today's her first day, so she doesn't know much about it. She comes from the medical field as a medical assistant. She doesn't have court experience, but is very eager to learn, and she's by Ringo, so she's going to help us with that. She's, she really wants to help people and wants to learn, so I'm happy to show her. So for court collections last month in December, they totaled $17,156.73. From November, that's a decrease of $390.07. From last fiscal year, that's a decrease of $16,450.87. In December, file violations were 133, a decrease of two from November, and a decrease of 127 from last year. Dockets were totaled 113, 80 were resets and initial appearances, 21 were pre-trials. We had no jury trials or judge trials in December, two preliminary hearings and 10 show cause hearings. We issued 55 warrants and 23 were cleared. 47 cases were completed, 88 being dismissed with various compliances, with a total adjudicated of 135.
Any questions for Valerie? Mariella, I'd like to welcome you to the City of Fullshire. I did quiz Valerie quite a bit about your interview process, and she was very excited and very complimentary of your qualifications, and you're learning under someone that's got a lot of experience and talent, so I would encourage you to take advantage of that.
I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Item 8D is a report from our building services department. Michelle.
Good evening. I'm sorry to leave you by report, I just now passed it around to y'all. I don't know what happened, but we'll make sure that doesn't happen again. In December, we did 73 residential plan reviews, with three commercial plan reviews and 810 inspections. I guess the good thing to note is the total number for the year 2015 is 783 residential homes, and we had a lot of illegal bandits. We were at 98 through law enforcement. If I could get Christine Guler to stand up. I get to push on the spotlight. Christine came to, when did you vote for Cross Creek branch?
August, no, October.
October last year. Well, in June, she came into our department and volunteered for the building services department. She dove right into the department, was great help by offering her services and filing, answering phones, and helping navigate our citizens in the right direction and giving them superior, superior customer service. The customer service department, as you know, was very busy, and we had the opportunity to hire her as a part-time technician. She was hired in July, 27th this past year. Her skill set contributed to our department, she was able to get things done in a timely manner and do things correctly. Christine's been with us for six months as we introduce new developments. We moved our office to another location, and she stays positive and contributes ideas all the time to how we can improve our department. We'd like to thank her for her commitment to our city and for all that she's done for us so far. And if the city has anything else that we could possibly, I know CJ's already trying
what I've done for the last four years with council.
to see what he can do to the city work.
Essentially, what we do is we just have, by law, we have to produce a racial profiling
We have, her last day will be Friday. As part-time, as you know, that we only have two full-time positions, we don't have any
report to council by March 1st of every year.
part-time positions open. We have filled those positions as of next Monday, those will be filled, so.
So normally, what probably satisfies is just giving you that report. A lot of times, we try to explain that, so the racial profiling laws are a little bit
We just wanted to publicly thank her for all her work.
Yes. Thank you. Are there any questions for Michelle, from her report?
confusing. Some of the information is great, some of it is horrible, so what we try to do is try to explain what the racial profiling, the numbers represent, and then you kind of see
We got off the hook easy this time.
what citations and the racial makeup of our traffic stops are. So, really, just to kind of go into it, I'm going to go through real quick.
Item number nine is our regular business.
If there are numbers that you'd like to discuss, I have last year's numbers, or at
Nine A is discussion of presentation of police annual racial profiling report by
least the percentages increase or decrease, so what I have is just the 2015 numbers.
Chief Seymour.
For 2015, we, and I'll give you the total of stops, but 618 stops resulted, we stopped 618 Caucasians in that, these are all citations. These are not warnings, these don't represent a warning being issued, these are all just citations. And as you can see, the numbers there represent those citations that were issued to those racial makeups. So obviously, 196 for African-American, 480 Hispanic, 46 to Asian, and so on and so on. One of the things that the racial profiling and all the schools I've been to teaches is that there's two flaws in this. Number one, you don't know who's in your community when they commit a traffic offense, you don't know the racial makeup of what they are, and two, you do not know what the intent is of the officer. So that's where the racial profiling has been flawed, at least from the law enforcement standpoint. To give you, for instance, if I was down in South Texas, where our population is predominantly Hispanic, I'm probably going to stop more Hispanics. So you have to look at it for what it is, you also have to look at your resident versus your non-resident, your population, your daytime population, your traffic that comes in. So essentially, this is our makeup for, I apologize if I'm in front of you guys, this is our traffic stops, and again, looking at it from a standpoint, we had almost 6,000 traffic stops were conducted last year, and of that, 1345 were issued, citations were issued, and 530 warnings issued. Now, you see that those numbers don't match up, but again, understand that citations and warnings can be issued at the same traffic stop, so we have to pull that number and add that to our racial profiling report or stat. We conducted 98 searches, 42 were consensual, and zero traffic arrests were made. Now, what is traffic arrests? We've arrested people that were in vehicles, we arrested nobody for running a stop sign or your taillight, or what I call minimal offenses, okay? I like that approach, I don't think that, you know, I don't like us making what I call trivial arrests. So that suggests that we're being fair. Again, if you look at our citations per our warnings, you can see that I think we're overly fair in our traffic contacts. Try to go real slow, so, look this real quick. So, just understand some of the things that we're going through, and again, that was pretty much the racial profiling report, so that's how brief it is. So if there's some numbers, if you guys want to know what the numbers were last year, the percentages, I have that. To kind of inform you of some of the things that we're going through in the City of Fullshire, to date, or as of December 31st, we averaged 6,700 calls for service, okay, that was about a 7% increase from 2014. Calls for services are derived from anything self-initiated to anything call-driven that's dispatched. So the one thing that we don't do, and some cities do, is they actually add their traffic contacts. So you look at between our traffic contacts and our calls for service, it's right at about 12,000 calls for service, if you really put it together. We investigated 83 traffic accidents, and we're actually down 12% from 2014. We made 448 arrests for 2015, we're actually up 160% from 2014. And property recovered is just items that were recovered in pursuit of a theft or burglary, or property that was recovered in other investigations in other cities. And then we had 457 investigations that were conducted, which is about a 42% increase from 2014. Mark, yes, sir?
What do you consider an investigation, just so we know what's?
Investigation can be anything reported or anything self-initiated by the officer. So any crime reported, theft, burglary, assault, up to a self-initiated investigation that tracks no drugs or alcohol-related.
Okay.
And so you guys understand that our crime index is based on Part 1 crimes. There are Part 1 and Part 2 crimes. Part 1 crimes are essentially your most violent crimes, I haven't broken out the categories there, your homicide, forcible rapes, robberies, assaults, burglaries, thefts, and motor vehicle thefts. And you can see the categories were actually up in every category except for burglary, and we're actually down in burglaries. I would say probably the thefts and the burglaries, just off the top of my head, I would say probably about 95 to 97% of those are all construction theft issues. I know we had one B&amp;B that happened out at the Countrymark, so again, just looking at some of these, their quality of life issues that you have in other cities is not significant is what we're seeing here. So just understand the robberies we had, we did have one robbery, what that does is, that tells me that the problems that other people are having, we now have those problems. So we have to be very vigilant in what we're doing in our enforcement efforts to thwart any future robberies that we may have. Assaults, generally, majority of those, I would probably tell you, a very high 90% are all domestic. There's some education in things out, that are out there that can help prevent those, but those are, as our bedroom type of community expands, we're going to see a whole lot more of those. Motor vehicle thefts, the one we had there was actually a theft from another county that we recovered, and we were able to file charges on that. So we didn't actually have a vehicle that was stolen from the City of Fullshire, it was one that was recovered. So, kind of break all those down, and you understand what was reported, what's actual and what's cleared. There are only three ways to clear a report or clear a case, and that's through an arrest, unfounded, or, what's the third one? I'll come up with it in just a minute. What is it? Oh. I did draw a blank, so. But as you said, these are just your reports that are being listed again, or your cases being listed again, and what's actual and what's not actual. And where we get actual and not actual is we may get a report, and we may realize it did not happen here, and so we forward that over to the jurisdiction which it does, and we let them take over, and so that's not counted against us, and in the cleared cases, exceptional means is the third one. And so you look at how we're clearing those cases, we got into a little trend, you see that 47, that looks like we're rock stars there. Where we got into this is we were trying to figure out how to stop this hole that we have in our construction thefts, to suggest that we don't have to answer for the property loss. Well, we do, and I think in this, there was some ideas that they don't file the charges, but we file the reports, and that was, that's totally inaccurate. So I would tell you that we probably only arrested about four people for thefts in 2015. So just looking at it, that's how it was coded, and we probably need to go back and change those so we're a little bit more accurate. Motor vehicle thefts, obviously we had four reported, we only actually had one, and that was a joyriding incident that Junior took the car, and we solved that one a few hours later. Any questions? Again, I have, I'm going through this real fast, you guys are not here all night.
So Chief, if there were four reported, what were the three that were reported?
Those were reported from other agencies. So again, we've either arrested a person in a stolen car, and we forward that back over to the reporting agency. Our internal reports, formal officer complaints, we had zero. Now, I'll tell you where that's number is significant to me, is I just told you we have 12,000 citizen contacts in a year. Well, I can tell you that we've had one complaint in two years, and that complaint was unfounded, so I would estimate about 24,000 calls for service in citizen contacts and have zero. I can tell you, there's a lot of people in my position would love to say that, okay? Not all the time, the people in this profession are doing it right, but I think the people that we got on staff are doing what they need to be doing to minimize that number, so I am very proud of that number. Use of force, we're actually up 600%, we had six, we had zero last year. All six met the, our use of force criteria, all were reviewed pursuant to our policy, and we found no wrongdoing on behalf of the officer. Fleet accidents, we had one, we read fault, and we handled that internally. So obviously, you guys know that I'm pretty anal about the vehicles and what we need to be doing, we do have a good policy in place, which tells these guys, gives them good instructions of what they're supposed to be doing regardless of emergency situations. So again, we're not without fault there, so in that one, we were faulted as a result of the accident. Vehicle pursuits, we had two, in 2014, we had seven, and as you can see, the use of force in our pursuits, we're seeing we're running across more and more people that aren't compliant. So, you know, these are things that we visit with the officers about, and we're kind of conditioned to understand there's a trend, and how are we going to handle that trend? So just understand that the more people we get, the more opportunities we get for these numbers to inflate a little bit. So again, we can't determine when a person's going to run from us, or when they're going to be combative, we just have to react to it. Officer injuries, we had two officer injuries, both were minor, the officer was taken, both officers were taken for minor issues and more precautionary, so again, we're up from there.
Katie, just as a comment, the formal officer complaint, I want to just comment that I know we're all very proud of that. I continue to hear, I had a friend at church, actually, who goes to church in Rosenberg, and they said, well, they were taking their kid to school at Huggins, had a little bump in the line, and so it was their fault, but, I mean, they were just really complimentary of the officer handling themselves, they didn't tell me who it was or what it was, but I got a compliment there. I was eating breakfast at Essent House Saturday morning, a guy I know from Fire Department, he just moved to the area, came in, he was like, I just got a ticket on the way to breakfast, but he was, somehow he was smiling about it, maybe he was just, that's all he could do, but, anyway, I just, you know, they're not, you're not always getting people at their best hour, and they're upset, but I continue to hear professionalism and respect coming through that, and please pass that along, that I know that we as a body just appreciate that, just.
So, you know, these are things that we visit with the officers about and we're kind of conditioned to understand there's a trend and how are we going to handle that trend? So just understand that the more people we get, the more opportunities we get for these numbers to inflate a little bit. So again, we can't determine when a person's going to run from us or when they're going to be combative. We just have to react to it. Officer entries, we had two officer entries. Both were minor. The officer was taken for, both officers were taken for minor issues and more precautionary. So again, we're up from there.
Eddie, just as a comment, the formal officer complaint, I want to just comment that I know we're all very proud of that. I continue to hear, I had a friend at church, actually, who goes to church in Rosenberg, and they said, well, they were taking their kid to school at Huggins, had a little bump in the line, and so it was their fault, but, I mean, they were just really complimentary how the officer handled themselves. They didn't tell me who it was or what it was, but I got a compliment there. I was eating breakfast at Essens House Saturday morning. A guy I know from Fire Department, he just moved to the area, came in, he was like, "I just got a ticket on the way to breakfast," but he was, somehow he was smiling about it. Maybe he was just, that's all he could do, but anyway, I just, you know, you're not always getting people at their best hour and they're upset, but I continue to hear professionalism and respect coming through that, and please pass that along, that I know that we as a body just appreciate that, just unbelievably, because you hear so many other stories.
Sure, sure. Thank you. And true, go a little further on the complaints. Don't get me wrong, people don't like what we do. So sometimes they disagree, and that's fine. That's their opinion. We invite them to come in and we usually talk about those things. So we've had people that come in, complain about the issue, but once we've laid out the facts and circumstances, it's usually taken care of right then and there. So when I talk about formal complaints, these are formal complaints that a person lists out and files that complaint, and then we go through an internal process and, you know, and we review that based on the investigation of, you know, what the officer says, what the facts and circumstances are, what video we may have, and so on and so on. So again, there were zero people that came in and filed a complaint. There were people that were not happy, but, I think I was told, sometimes doing the right thing is not always popping. Any more questions? A couple more slides here. Just some ongoing initiatives, Facebook, Twitter, I think we're, God, Mike, did you make it a little bit?
Eight thousand.
We're about eight thousand likes and...
And I think we made international news with Star Wars.
Yeah, the Star Wars thing, they asked me about that, and there was one question, only negative question we got out of the whole thing, is how much did it cost? Absolutely nothing. We use our in-car video, just an opportunity for us to reach out and have a good time with the community. It was a good time. I think that's what that picture is right there. So it was an opportunity for us to have a good time with the community and kind of put a face with who we really are. That's where we go into the YouTube and we establish that. Our blog, people like it, they don't like it. If you get arrested in Full Shire, we're going to push you out there. So I come from a small town and they used to list all the crimes that they used to have. We've caught a lot of flack about it, but you know what? I want to keep it. I like it. Clicker Ticket, this is another one of those driving initiatives. We participate in tech stops, a driver ticket initiative. So obviously, when you start seeing those kinds of clicker ticket, lock them up, folks. DWDI Initiative, again, we received funding from that. Last year, I think it was about 8,000 we got for overtime. I've gotten to be very, very big on our DWDI investigations and so in our enforcement. So we're going to be out there and we're going to be aggressive in our enforcement. And I think you guys should appreciate, will appreciate that. Driver improvement initiatives, there's a lot of them out there. We receive a grant every year through this initiative to buy equipment and things that help us with our job, whether it be radars, spike strips, or whatever. We've been a part of that for about three years now. Texas Best Practices, I'm going to stop on this one for just a second. This has been almost a two-year process. This is kind of one of the things, when I got appointed, that I said that we were going to do, and it has been, it took, it's taken us way longer. I know I have Bill Heady who sat on the committee, council approved for us to put a committee together, to put our policies together on how our personnel, our police department should respond and react with our community. And what we did is three purposes for those policies. We looked at what was best for the community, what was best for the officer, and what was best for the department. When we compiled, we compiled those policies based on recommendations from Texas Best Practices, which is basically from the Texas Police Chiefs Association. Right now, I want to guess, I think about 180 police departments throughout the state of Texas have had their accreditation. February, February 9th, we have our final assessment, so whether we pass or we don't pass, that all comes into play. So we have been, Sergeant Miller is working very, very hard in preparing that, getting us where we need to be. And I can tell you, this is a two-day assessment. We have police chiefs, some other police departments are retired. They'll do, they'll come out at 9:00, 10:00, 12:00, 1:00 in the morning, riding our guys. They will quiz them about our policies to ensure that we, not only do we have them, but we're also practicing them. They'll do site inspections, they're going to be part of us for two whole days, and then verifications will tell whether we have passed or we haven't passed. What does that mean? That means that you have a police department and is doing second to nobody. So again, it's a huge accolade for our city, considering where we've come from and the history we've had with our police department, and I'm very excited about this one particular achievement. Project, the project 1033, I was a little upset that the sheriff got a helicopter, so I'm going to get my own. So what this is, is we...
I guess I don't want to get into it, Eddie.
No. And also, seriously, the government has a lot of surplus out there, a lot of things are willing to share with law enforcement. We just became a member of this. There are vehicles, there's a lot of tools, generators, there's a lot of things that we can use to help the city in furthering its emergency services. So it's, like I said, the sky's the limit, but there are a lot of things in there that we don't have to purchase or have to go through our budget process to purchase or not purchase to acquire these things. So again, this is something that I know CJ had been bouncing off of me, you know, a little bit, and we just came back from Austin and we're now official, a member of that project 1033. Crime report, again, that kind of falls back into what we've been doing with the blog. Is a blog something that people talk about?
Right.
That's something we ask.
Facebook.
I thought a blog was something you'd talk about. Anyway, you can't comment on us. Finally, just a few things, some things that we are ongoing, Coffee with a Cop, National Night Out, these are all things that we've embraced and things that we are in the process of doing or adding to our community-oriented projects. And you see the list there, the Police Explorer Program. I did ask, and I know a lot of city officials have been asked this, what do we do for our youth? And, you know, we don't have parks yet, we don't have certain things, and I think this is kind of an avenue that we can take through the Boy Scouts, where we can actually take young people and teach them what law enforcement's about. And they did go out and compete with these other posts throughout the state, and it's, I participated when I was at Rosenberg, and both my sons were on it, and it's a pretty good thing. And so we're looking at doing that. Praise is in the Civilian Response Act, the shooter events, we're looking at putting that on for the community. Christmas with a Cop, this was an idea of Mike's, threw it on, it was very well received. There's a lot of folks out there. Fanpage, a safe place, that was, I think we're the first one in Texas to ever do that. And whether you want to change your TV with another person or your kids, they're doing it. Project Life Series, this is something that we're probably going to throw into our budget to help out. Right now, we've partnered with the sheriff's office. We have a few individuals that reside in the Cross Creek area that have some mental deficiencies and they get lost, and this is a way for us to locate them. They currently have bracelets on that the locators were able to find a little quicker. Some of these, we have one of the kids that's five years old and doesn't know how to swim, doesn't know how, and so these are things that we're taking on and trying to be a little bit more proactive because when one gets lost, it takes a lot of us to find it. So, and in crimes, this is kind of a crime report that we're offering to the community. We're looking at it right now. This kind of puts our stats out there for the community to look at as opposed to having to stand up here and be given to you. That's probably way more informative. Again, that's one of the things that we're looking at. And just kind of last, last one here. We have 14 full-time officers, two administrators, two supervisors. We have four reserve officers and one's in the administrative position with one opening. And understand, we work 12-hour shifts and in that, we're trying to augment those shifts to, we optimize the amount of time that we have in our peak times. So again, we're trying to manipulate that to give the best service that we possibly can to the community. And again, where we're at with the new acquisitions and the officers we have, you know, we'll probably add another one in April, so hopefully we'll get full staff in and we're able to kind of do some different things with our shifts. So I try to go through this as quick as I can, so if you have any questions.
Council has any questions or comments?
Well, council has any questions or comments?
Well, I mean, we know that you'll do a great job, and I wanted to give you our kudos on your relationship that you do have with the children, with the kids in Full Shire. I know our Girl Scouts, my daughters, all of the kids that go to their literary school speak very highly of the police officers, and they look up to y'all. And I think that's great to have that in our city because you get more and more kids move in every day. And the fact that the youth looks up to the police officers and sees them as heroes and sees them as someone, as a role model, I think that's really a good thing. Good job on that.
Lastly, I'll stand right here and I'll tell you, you know, all the work and effort goes from the people that work for me. I can stand up here and listen to all the compliments that we have, but again, all the compliments should be for the men and women that do this day in and day out. So I would tell you this, I've worked, I've been a policeman for almost 28 years, and you have a very good group of people, not because they're mine, I can just tell you that you have a very good group of people that really care and they're sincere about what they do and they understand what's happening here. So I think you can see there's a little bit of compassion in what we do and the contacts that we make. We try to be fair, but we will be firm. And I use words like we're actively enforcing or aggressively enforcing. Aggressive sounds in there. We are aggressively enforcing DWIs, we're aggressively enforcing drug laws, we're aggressively enforcing those laws that will have great impact on our community. So again, I think that as a business owner, as a resident here, you appreciate the effort that these guys are putting in. So without that, I'll shut up.
Good job.
Thank you.
Item 9B is consideration and possible action to approve checks paid and payable from December 14, 2015 to January 13, 2016. And I think Kristy, hiding back there? Kristy is here. Hopefully she can help us answer any questions that you may have.
One of the things I brought to, we just touched on this earlier this afternoon, one of our Wells Fargo business cards, and this is very random. We had it over a limited fee just because we've had a lot of activity, a lot of trading, a lot of registrations that happened this past month. If we can maybe reach out to the banks to see what we can do to avoid those fees, it just seems, you know, if we can, if we need an increase, we can certainly bring that before council, but we just try to avoid those excess charges.
Yes, and we normally do, we monitor those, and, you know, I believe a few months ago we kind of revisited and we changed a little bit about limits and whose limit, you know, increase some limits and so forth like that, but we do monitor those. And although they do show up on the actual statements, I do contact our representatives at Wells Fargo and typically they'll take care of them for us as a courtesy to us.
Any further questions of Kristy or...
Make a motion to approve checks paid and payable from December 14, 2015 to January 13, 2016.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Karen. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Build or pay. Item C is consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 2016-1205, an ordinance of the city of Full Shire amending the city zoning ordinance to include provisions related to architectural design standards within the city limits. We do have, Gary Mitchell is here to give a presentation, but as was mentioned earlier, I think we had a good cross-section of the committee who were working together on this particular item. We adopted zoning back in May of 2012. For those of you who may not have been around at that time, it took quite a long time, so there were a lot of concerns about that. I think every time we go through and make modifications to that, we need to do it very carefully. And glad that we had a great committee, and then Gary Mitchell has been working with us long enough to know what the community's vision is and appreciate his helping lead that committee as well. But with that, CJ, do you have any other introductory comments you'd like to make before I turn it over to Gary?
I'd just like to say that the committee did a great job. They worked together very, very well. They didn't always agree on every single point, but they always kept a vision that what was important, what was best for the city was the most important thing to go into the ordinance. And so Mr. Roberts, Missante, Miss State, Miss Ward, Mr. Michelle and Amy did a great job putting everything together.
Thank you. Put that, I'll turn it over to Gary.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for talking for a bit for me.
Did you want the music in the key of G or...
No, I think keep it down tonight. I know some of you are seeing a variation of this for the second time or the third time, others in the room as well, so I'll move through it quickly, but just to give you the background one more time. The key piece of the ordinance, certainly the standards portion being the most significant. Just to emphasize again, in various places where we try to give menus of options, ways to comply with these requirements. On the administrative side, just to emphasize again, this is meant to be a checklist-type process where staff can look at plans and make the determination versus cities that use a design review board that can get very subjective and have to worry about consistency from case to case. Because it's under zoning, of course, there has to be an appeal mechanism and variance opportunities. I'll talk more about that along the way. Once again, the purposes at the front of the ordinance are a lot of key words that carry over from the city's long-range plan, the comprehensive plan, things that citizens talked about wanting to see today and in the future in Full Shire, especially as commercial development now comes after residential. As far as how the ordinance applies, it's in certain of the zoning districts, it's focused on commercial development, then multifamily development as well, and the downtown district is the third portion. Because it's within the zoning ordinance, zoning only applies within the city limits in Texas. It's not in areas that have prior agreements already in place, places like Cross Creek Ranch, areas that have gotten a planned unit development approval under zoning that's already in place. The last point is just saying it doesn't apply in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, but it can certainly be shown to applicants in ETJ and say, this is what we're trying to accomplish long-term in our city. So it can be used in that way, like any ordinance. People want to know about how does it affect people on the ground today if it were passed tomorrow? As in other aspects of zoning, you would be grandfathered unless a building was expanding by basically the majority of its size. 50% or more of the floor area that's within the building, then these standards would apply. Some of the standards, this is spelled out in the ordinance, would apply for smaller expansions, spelled out here. And then in the cases of tornado, fire, natural disaster, as in other parts of zoning, it's again, that 50% threshold that you'd be exempt unless the majority of the building had to be rebuilt. This table within the ordinance, I bring this up because it reflects the way the ordinance was put together, working with the committee. The first column, along the left side are all the various types of standards. The first column is what applies to commercial development, so about half of that list. The next column over is the multifamily, so some of those standards carry over to multifamily as well. Then there's a few additional just for multifamily development. The final column is the downtown district, so again, things flow into that district from the previous ones. And then there's things that apply only in the downtown district. One thing the committee decided on early on is that things like building materials, some of the other standards would apply on all sides of a building versus cities that only make requirements on the front of the building, which can be interesting when you're driving down a roadway and the side of the building is plain, the front has a certain look to it. So this is partly thinking about residents too that live behind commercial developments that they see equality as well. So the first part of the standards is building finished materials. It talks about the main materials on building walls, the principal finish, that's 85% of the facade has to be these materials. The other 15% can be accent materials. There's a list of cert materials that are prohibited in all cases. There's a provision for projects that are pursuing LEED or energy certifications, there's a little more flexibility there. Standards for roofing and then canopies and awnings that extend from buildings. So as far as those primary materials, those 85% materials, certainly brick. Various forms of natural stone. And then decorative concrete block materials that can end up looking like stone, but it's not just your plain, flat concrete block, of course. And then precast concrete panels that again, can come off with the masonry look and stone look in certain cases, but that's more of a tilt wall construction. And then the accent materials. So this is the 15% material. So you kind of see the break between things that the community and the committee wanted to emphasize as what most of a building should appear to be, but then these other materials that can be kind of the touches on a building that add character to it, but wouldn't be an entire side of a building, for example. This is a final item that's on the materials list, recognizing technology that's out there, but ways that architects are putting materials into buildings that serve the energy purpose, the solar energy collection purpose, whether it's on windows or walkways outside of a Colors, we're going to definitely come back to this during your discussion, I'm sure. So what I'll just say at this point is the approach here is to try and rule out the most extreme cases and give some parameters there. But there are cities that do very detailed design studies of certain districts or their city to arrive at a palette of colors in trying to get some basic design standards adopted. That is not the approach here. We always approach this as an ordinance that is a starting point that you will likely add to and modify as you go. So we'll talk more about colors down the way. This is another part of the material or the design standards themselves. Just the idea of avoiding the terms, big boxes, just plain box buildings by requiring offsetting the walls, not just a long, straight roof line and walls that are just all masonry. We talked about other cities where even with design standards, buildings can look very monotonous or plain. Since our office is in Sugar Land, I'm not crazy about some of the architecture, but it has just about everything on the menu in these buildings. So on that building in Sugar Land Town Square are a lot of these elements as far as not just flat walls, how a building has pieces that project outward inward. The roof isn't just a straight line. You can see on parts of building, there's either patterns on the brick or certain design touches that break up the brick. Windows at the street level, faux artificial windows at that second level, but different ways to add interest to a building. This is another example in Sugar Land, the Garden Ridge down in Sugar Land. We show this image because this building would comply in certain ways as far as masonry and things like that. It wouldn't meet the anti-monotony, that straight, long line of roof to straight line. That's a big box. That's what we're trying to avoid. So it is a shorter length in the Fulcher standards where you have to provide some variation in that roof line. And again, just some examples of how fast food outlets can look when various of these standards are applied. In a shopping center that has out parcels out by the street, multiple buildings, just the idea that the whole center should have the same type of look. And even parking structures should complement the buildings they serve, not just be plain concrete big structures. In a gas station situation, the canopies matching the look of the building, having character, the poles themselves not just being plain metal poles. The drive-through lane at the fast food not just being an overhang, but matches the design of the building and the materials. And then canopies, awnings that extend from a building, just requirements for those as far as size and length. And no backlighting of those for reasons like this. We also deal with situations, whether it's in a downtown situation or at some retail centers, especially in this part of the world, with the arcade treatment of covered walkways. So that's addressed. And with auto service businesses, just the simple standard of want the building turned away from the street so those service bays aren't facing toward the passing traffic and is what you see. And mechanical equipment on buildings. A lot of things we talked about, we were referring to what's already here in Fulcher in certain cases, things people have seen, things they want to avoid in the future as other cities do. So whether it's mechanical equipment that's on the building itself, so you see it possibly as you're driving by, or if it's on a rooftop, if it's ground-level equipment like AC units, electrical. In the upper case, one of the points there is those rooftop units are screened from the street, from the sides, but it's those homes in the back where there's no screening. And those are two-story homes, so that's what they're seeing out their windows. So trying to, that's part of that 360-degree approach. On the multifamily side, again, some of these standards carry over as far as materials, quality and design, but these are some specific things for multifamily. Really, it's trying to avoid garden-style apartment construction going forward in Fulcher. It's, I always use the analogy of hotel versus motel. It's doors for units that face outward versus a building where you go through the building, a lobby situation, to get to the units. And then that way, there's all that outer wall space to do the design enhancements. Wraparound parking, there's examples all around Houston. This happens to be in Nassau Bay down in Clear Lake area. Residents were very concerned about multifamily coming in. That's the garage in the middle. So this is what it looks like from the outside. Now the residents are saying, "does anybody live there?" Because they never see anybody going in and out, they don't see surface parking, they don't see the parking garage structure. So works out very nicely. Carports for multifamily, again, just setting the bar a little higher so it's not just basic construction and that it matches the look of the rest of the development. In the downtown district, once again, things carry over from those earlier districts, but then adding some specifics for a downtown situation. And we recognize in downtown Fulcher, we're only dealing with a small set of buildings along Main that have that downtown characteristic, but going forward, and as there's the potential for more of that downtown feel, you know, we certainly look to examples around the region where if there's multiple buildings on a larger development site, that there's opportunities to group buildings so that there's a plaza situation, a pocket park-type situation. In the downtown district specifically, this idea, in the ordinance, the term logo design is used, franchise architecture is another term, but buildings that from the moment you look at them, you know what it is. And it may even look like the bucket of chicken in some cases. So just saying, we're off the bat, you need to do a type of design that matches what's in our community locally, not just what you'd see anywhere around the country. Street-level transparency, if you think about small-town downtowns and strolling along a Main Street, just that idea of whether it's storefronts, office windows, just a lot of windows at ground level. We'll come back to this because the Planning Commission had some thoughts on this. And even in a parking garage situation, this is Sugar Land Town Square, again, that's one of those gigantic parking structures, but at the street level, it's restaurants and stores. And finally, on the administrative side, I do want to emphasize for the council members, when we first talked about this in workshop situation in early December, you recall, we had some discussion with the city attorney here of just needing to fit this within the zoning framework, how that works in Texas. So tonight on your agenda is the creation of a zoning board of adjustment, but that is an appeals body in Texas and in other states for zoning. So if an applicant, under these design standards, just like any other part of the zoning ordinance, had an issue with the staff decision, that's the body that it would go to for appeal and for decision. If there were a variance situation, a person, because of some unique situation on their property, they're requesting a variance, that's a hardship request process. The ZVA would determine that. And as we discussed previously, in that case, typically the board is going to be providing some lowering of a standard to provide that relief. I say that because the third option, another way we try to provide flexibility in these standards is, it's partly technology, it's partly just not knowing all the possibilities out there with these ordinances. An applicant can come in and propose another way to meet one of the standards, an alternative standard of compliance. That will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for decision. And they have the typical options, they can approve it, approve with conditions, or disapprove. I bring that up because that's a case where it's as written in the ordinance, the P and Z can only approve that if it meets the purposes of the ordinance and the same standard or a better standard. They can't reduce the standard. So very important. On the submittal side, it was great to have Michelle in this process all along the way, but in cities that have design standards, it's the need to see illustrations of what the buildings will look like from the side, the elevations, the building walls. A concept plan for a site where it's some of those issues like the public space on a site, landscaping and screening already is dealt with as an application issue. So finally, when the Planning and Zoning Commission met on this earlier this month, had their hearing, they recommended it to the council, but had three suggestions for things to look at or modify. Color, I told everybody at the start of this process, that's the most subjective part of this process if you try to deal with color. So I have some additional slides after I stop for your discussion that might help with that issue. The second item was with that, the windows along the street in the downtown district, and it talks about 60% transparency of that front building facade. We had the very good point that it wasn't just defined what dimension of that first floor is the ground level. So there's language that, I didn't know if that made it into the packet, CJ, but we've got some language that it would be just some simple sentence changes to say that's the 12 feet from ground level, from ground 12 feet up. So the front wall of a building from ground to 12 feet, 60% of that would need to be transparent, doors and windows. And then as part of that, the Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman just wanted to emphasize, just so it's clear, above that ground level, all the other standards apply as elsewhere. So we address that as well. So Mayor, I was going to stop here. I have a few more illustrations that could help as you get into your discussion, but I want to stop and take your questions at this point.
Yeah, I had a couple of them and you've covered those, but one big one was what response did you get from P and Z? And so I really think you've done a great job outlining what their concerns were and how you and the committee addressed those. Another thing that I hear from time to time from, especially commercial developments trying to come into Fulcher, is trying to navigate all of our ordinances and permits and, you know, slowing them down. And could you speak from your experience, will this lengthen the time and burden on commercial development coming into the Fulcher? Or is it going to be just another portion of the application that'll be fairly quick for them to navigate based on your experience?
First point is, I appreciate that Michelle is already putting together a checklist, as we discussed, to just go through the standards and say, "meet it, don't meet it, or is there an issue?" Just as with a lot of things you already receive on applications. Short answer is it should not add significant time. If there's an issue of compliance, certainly, there's usually some back and forth, just like anything, that may come in on an application. And then as outlined, if there's an issue with the staff interpretation decision, then there is a committee to go to. That could be additional process, but it is a relief valve if the person is not satisfied with the staff decision.
Council, have any questions?
The only other thing I wanted to say about that is that CJ started some time ago, two years ago I think it was, a development book that he gives to everybody that comes in that potentially wants to develop in Fulcher, where he gave them all the ordinance and matches it down with them and we speak with them. So they typically will have a book of reference already ahead of time if they come in and talk with us. And we try to sit down and have pre-construction meetings prior to, even before the submittal plans. So we try to work with them ahead of time and let them be aware of what we have. Can we make that checklist part of that development? The checklist that I created was made for me for when I'm doing a review, but what I did do is I went also through the ordinance and I highlighted certain sections, which is what I'm going to submit into after y'all approve it. I'm going to submit that into the development book, so it'll be highlighted based on which area, which section of town would their building be to, whether it's downtown or chart set forth in section 1-168, excellent.
Mayor, if I could mention also, early in our committee process, one part of the discussion was being sensitive to your small and local businesses, but also recognizing when some of your national chains and larger brands come in, a lot of our Texas communities, usually the response is, "that's it. That's all I have to do." So trying to find a middle ground there. But when you're dealing with the toll stations of the world, Austin's, in our area, Arland, Missouri City, Sugar Land, there's cities like that that have size standards. So this is a similar process.
I think having the balance is what's key.
Did you have more on the color provisions?
If we do, I'd like to save that for last.
You'd like to save another slide.
That's going to be the trick.
Mayor, I certainly appreciate you taking my, taking time to explain, you know, the certain paragraph that I went over in 1-170A to make sure that the standards were applicable and not exceptions to the rules. So I appreciate that. The only Scrivener error in all of this, which is, it's an amazing document, that the commission and the committee should definitely see, receive lots of kudos for this, is on page 6, 1-167, subpart C, part 2. The entire paragraph references 90%, but they left out the one number, they spelled out the word, but just to make it consistent throughout, that's it. And that was the way it was in the masonry ordinance, and we can correct that. Okay. It is probably not on your draft. They turned this into ordinance language for us, so it might not be your page 6 on the draft.
Section 3, subparagraph 6.
Yeah, it's section 3 of our ordinance, 1-167.
It's just not covered.
It's just not. But other than that, the checklist format, I think is great. The 360 view, the out parcels, the hotel approach to multifamily, I think it's all very much in line with what our citizens are looking for out of the committee. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? No? Somebody wants to pick colors?
No, I think they did a fantastic job with the seminar presentations, Victor and the presentation workshop.
So I have a request, which is where these additional slides go.
I never get to pick colors, Gary, so I'm out on this one.
And just, this was the language that we're proposing to deal with the Planning and Zoning Commission changes. It's just that clarification that the ground level is the 12 feet up. This is my request, I'd like to add one sentence to the definition section for a window. The reason for this, and this would be if a council-
You mean it's not clear?
If a council member wanted to make this motion, excuse me. The reason this is coming up is because just at the committee level, planning zoning, and now council potentially, the question of, people like to bring up scenarios, because the language always says the building materials or avoiding blank walls, whatever the standard is, applies to a wall excluding doors and windows, you know, people have said, "well, what's to keep somebody from putting in a gigantic window?" So the point is, a window is an opening in the wall, it's not the wall. So I'll come, that's the sentence I'd like to add.
That's your own section?
In the definition section. And so the point being, this would not comply with the ordinance. That's not a window, that is the wall. Those are windows. And as the ordinance is currently written, the point is that on a wall, glass can only be an accent material. So in a downtown situation, I have no problem with this. Transparency, you see into restaurants, you see offices. In less downtown situations, strip center-type situations, people don't typically use that much glass for energy-saving reasons, things like that. So, but this would make that distinction of window versus wall. If adopted. So just again, in a shopping center situation, there's the overall wall, but a fair amount of the fronts of businesses may be transparent with windows. So that's one of my requests, and then everything else is the color issue. That would comply. That would comply. Oh, I was just using for the glass example, not everything else. Certainly that burnt orange color wouldn't be allowed.
No, I was going to say, great color, it's just misapplication of the stack of it.
No, I was going to say, great color, it's just this application of the stack of it. Thank you very much.
So, I guess my request, if any council member wanted to pursue it, would be to add through motion that definition to the ordinance.
Councilperson, did you have any more questions about color?
Yeah, he was getting there.
Oh yes, I can sit down and take care of everything.
I was just looking for a less subjective as well, like Planning and Zoning recommended in their letter, and so I just wondered what that takes from that.
Sure, sure. Let me try and stick this on.
He just spits a little.
On one hand, approaching, trying to get the basic ordinance adopted, would be that there's no mention of color, we're not dealing with color at all. So the approach here, and the way I would advise Michelle to apply this, is this is only for extreme situations, something that's clearly you don't see in Folscher. So, there's language about overly iridescent fluorescent colors, and then the next step is you look at the area around, is there anything like that? Would this totally stand out? The other side of the coin is cities, as I mentioned, that do design standards, there's these multi-hundred-page design studies of cities and plans. So, trying to set some parameters for staff to use, so there's some way to say the most extreme cases. There's places in the world where lots of colors absolutely make sense. If I were on staff, I would be comfortable saying, we can't approve that, there's nothing like that around here. This meets the internalized design for apartments, I don't think that would meet the standard. So, these are the cases we're trying to safeguard, that there's something. But beyond that, you've got to be careful, because in these types of standards that aren't about health and safety, you've got to be very careful with what the public purpose is. Here's some Missouri City language, you'll see some similarities, natural muted colors, what is that? Bright and glossy, so you see some similarities in that second bullet of trying to rule out the extremes. The same language as we have about awnings, awnings need to be complementary to the building they're extending from. And then, that last bullet is kind of that franchise design aspect. And I certainly can't see this, you may not be able to see this, but Missouri City did take the step at some points, and I know from knowing the staff years ago, they drove the city, and they did an inventory of what was on the ground and tried to set some parameters. What concerns me about setting a color palette, and some cities talk about earth tones, well, where does that end? Where does brown end, and where does beige end? There's some colors on this list, you can use forest green, why can't I use cargo green? So, I would be more concerned about sitting in the courtroom chair explaining why you can't have cargo green than saying, we don't want hot pink in our city. I think there's a better basis for that, so. But cities that go to this type of color selection, there's something behind it, they didn't just pull this out of the air. So that's where I felt like we were, is what would we base this on? So again, we're trying to use some basic language, just a couple of sentences to set some basic parameters for the extremes. Just to give you some examples from what's out there, Harland did adopt a color palette for some of their districts. And one of the members on the committee said after one of our meetings, we talked early on that we didn't want to stifle design creativity. So we're trying to provide a fair amount of flexibility, but deal with the extremes. This is the Frisco language, this is one that we had looked at, they do specify some colors there, they tie it to a reference that's out there, the Pittsburgh Paint Color Guide, the range of colors. So there's ways to tie it to a spectrum. To me, that would be a next step, if you want to go there, it's not in the current ordinance, but the bottom bullet, again, is similar to what we're using, looking around the vicinity. And this is an example of, you know, back 10, 15 years ago, Frisco did almost a hundred-page document just for their downtown area, to nail down all these specifics of these design standards, so. So these standards are more generalized in some cases, or very specific for materials, those are checklist-type things, colors are tricky. So let me go-
We don't want too much monotony either in the-
Right. Would a pastel work?
Absolutely.
Pastel pink house?
That's the, from my understanding, that is a royal color in Korea, and their white house is the pink house.
How far away from Korea?
And in Houston, there was a huge thing called by the word pastel pink house.
Silver memorial, is it? Do you remember that?
So, I read it correctly.
So it's not glossy?
It states what cannot be, like fluorescent, hot pink.
Right.
But then, after that, it's left up to CJ and Michelle, is that correct?
Well, and then if they don't like our opinion, then it goes to the board.
And where y'all basing your opinions on?
Well, I think that would be-
Burnt orange and-
Well, obviously Marin would be, Marin would be out. No, I think it would be what would be considered garish or overly eye-catching, if I'm driving down 1083 and somebody's got the sign of a, like you stored, if it was safety orange, I think that would obviously be an obvious exception, but if it was like a muted orange, that's probably okay. And I think that's, there's always going to be some subjectivity, I don't know that there's a way to make it objective. And I think, you know, P&amp;Z was concerned about the subjectivity, but I think Gary's done an amazing job of wordsmithing this to make it as objectively subjective as it can be, so.
And at the end of the day, staff does not get to just say no. By word of signal, my answer no has to immediately go before the board, because it is their final decision.
If you would.
I think that's a good approach, yes. I like the say what we don't want instead of what we do want, kind of approach.
If I were in the staff chair, I would be calling my city attorney if I had concerns, but I'm approaching this as a couple of times a year at the most, this might come a complaint. It shouldn't be an everyday thing, or there's something coming to Folscher related to it. Definitely doesn't expect.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance 2016-1205, the ordinance in the city of Folscher mainly are zoning ordinance to include provisions relating to the architectural design standards within the city limits, adding a definition of window to section 2, and the 90% notation at the end of section 3, which is currently on page 6.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you all very much. Item D is consideration of possible action to approve resolution number 2016-297, an ordinance of the city of Folscher appointing members to the zoning board of adjustment. I'm going to ask that this be postponed this evening, but let me, let me explain this a little bit more. We talked about that, if you look in our original zoning ordinance, the zoning board of adjustment will be able to hear appeals and variances, and once that board rules on this, there's no recourse to city council, that is it. And so I'd like to ask each city council member to submit one name for the zoning board of adjustment, and then one alternate. So, as soon as I get those from everyone, then we'll add it to the next agenda item with the list. This is a quasi-judicial body, and so we need to make sure that we have, there's no specific qualifications, but I think based on reviewing the zoning ordinance and the details and the modifications with the architectural standards, you can determine what type of person that we're looking for to serve in that role. And they may not meet every month, but when they meet, it will probably be very important. So, with that, I'll open it up for a motion. Are there comments if you have?
Who should I talk?
Second? Motion's been made and seconded, the postponed item D. Any questions, comments?
I'm going to need you both to name it.
Great, when does this become effective? Was it effective upon us voting, or is this still having to be published one more time? On the architectural design as amendment to the-
Thursday.
For how many days?
Thursday, the 21st. Or the 21st, 27th? Whatever. If you could have them about the 27th or 8th of January, that would be great.
They do meet rarely.
Are there any guidelines or standards or anything that we should look to, other than the fact they have a quasi-judicial function that we should be looking at applicants and candidates for this one?
Other than poll-
I mean, I would suggest that they need to be presidents of the city of Folscher, any interested interest here in the city.
The state law doesn't step over the criteria nor does the zoning ordinance. The Bible law doesn't step over the criteria of citizens.
And they cannot serve on city council or the Planning and Zoning Commission, that is one stipulation.
And they can't be staff?
Correct.
What about mugs? Utility dishes? In-city mode here. So you'd like to position?
They would do destruction, the question is, would they be, would a mud come forward to ZVA to request a variance for? Could be.
But would they would have to step aside?
I think it probably would. But if only you had a requirement for 75% of the board to participate and vote, so they're typically just drop off on that chance if you couldn't.
But in-city mode, it already has a utility, or a design agreement, it would never have like a cost, but they would never come in front of the ZVA, would they?
Would the city attendants, the calls that they're asking for a variance? Or, for instance, the driveway is too wide, but they need to put in to get to a water plant, and they need to shrink it, and then they can tell them the zoning applies, and they need to come before the ZVA for that variance request, and now they could have worse times. I mean, the development areas typically exempt a lot of those land use controls, we've already discussed that model, but if you have enough volunteers who are not on the board, I would suggest off putting those people that are already on and elected, not board, that if you're, for people who don't have enough, you run that risk. 75% is etched in stone. It's got to be the same 75% of the board that here, that hears the appeal, it has to be those same 75% that make that decision.
Do alternates meet with the board?
They can, but they don't bother.
But if they don't have enough of the regular members, then an alternate can step in and serve in that role for one meeting or two meetings, whatever the case may be. I mean, they're basically, they're on call, so they need to be ready to go in when the quarterback goes down, right?
Unless you play quarterback. Can they all go in?
So if your point is, your alternate will step in, or how would it?
Well, we have slotted, I think, for just maybe three alternates, so the idea is, I plan to just look through the alternates and come up with a suggestion and present to you. Any further comments? All right, all of the favor of postponing, say aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Item E is consideration of possible action to approve a procurement of services related to the city's geographic information system assessment and strategic plan for the city. And we'll turn this one over to Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Cities use their geographical information system to manage their municipal assets, handle data related to those assets, and provide better information for residents, business owners, city council, and staff. GIS functions as a repository and provides better information for residents, business owners, city council, and staff. The GIS typically includes a base map of land uses, and such as partial numbers, partial owner permits, zoning, and it includes physical items such as streetlights, traffic signals, utility meters, water pipes, sewer infrastructure, anything you can imagine. It could be crime mapping, it could be traffic accident intersections, hot spots like that that these may need. And what it does is it ties mapping with data. And by doing that, when you have issues anywhere in the city, if you have a home that has frequent solid waste misses, or sanitary sewer backups, or something like that, over a period of time, you can go back and by connecting those, the data and the mapping, you can provide real-world information that you can use to either find out what's going on with the utility or improve service overall to that home or business. And one of the immediate benefits of GIS is the ability to provide excellent, accurate visualizations through mapping associated with that data. The first step in cities establishing GIS is typically to perform a needs assessment, and then the development of a strategic multi-year implementation plan for budgeting purposes. The recommendation would be for that, for a consultant to come on site, interview the various departments, interview entities like Corbin County, Houston Galveston Area Council, and others that already have information related to Folscher that we can use and not recreate the will, not pay to do something that's already available to us. The strategic plan will lay out everything that's needed to make GIS a reality for the city of Folscher, including costs and the step-by-step implementation plan. It would include a presentation of these findings to the city council at completion. Staff recommends that council authorize us to proceed with a search for qualified consultants and select the most qualified consultant for an amount not to exceed $12,500 for the services. Funds are available for use in the professional services account within the planning and development departmental budget. There is a company that has done this where I've worked in three or four other cities, and they're very good at it, so that you'll see them mentioned in here, but if there are other local companies that do it now, I don't know of any, but if they're available, we're going to reach out and see who else can do this. If GTG ends up being the best one, they've already said this is the amount that it would cost them, and we'll see if there's another consultant that can provide the services as well.
That's great, I think that's important to do this now. I know several of the larger cities that are having to go back and map all of their sidewalks and everything, and they're having a hard time, so I think that's important that we do this now.
It's a very good point, once you, you do have it in place, you can require suppliers and middles to come in electronically, and you can just pop those right in to your mapping system, so that does, that's a very good point.
Mr. Ross, are we going to do an RFP for this, or is this something we look at choice partners or other people, or is this a sole source provider?
If they were a part of one of these cooperative purchasing agencies, we would use that, we haven't heard that for sure. So what we would do is just kind of broadcast out, HDAC's a great resource, they're going to know, Houston Galveston Area Council, they have a very robust GIS department, we'll communicate with them and see if there are others in the region that do this sort of consulting. Most of them in Houston region use GTG, which is why we've always used them in the cities where I've been.
Mr. Snipes, I see that I'm sure when you see $12,500 for these services, and we've kind of already tapped into the professional services, and we have a forester that keeps up that.
But that's, okay, yeah, let me clarify also, Madam Councilmember, we have multiple professional services, land items, and multiple departmental budgets, this one will become out of the planning and development director's budget, so.
I think developing our GIS system is, I mean, the sooner the better. Data's being generated on an astronomical basis, and being able to harness the power of what all of our developers are creating is going to be huge for the city. I mean, just, we're trying to get, I'm trying to get a GIS map now for evaluating the postal zip codes down Bodark and on all the streets down there to try to get us converted from Richmond address to Folscher. And so, we're having to go outside to do that, to accomplish that. But I would like to see us, you know, this is just an initial assessment, what happens a lot of times, what I've seen is cities, once they're developed, the price tag for implementing something like this is so large that they can't afford it. So if we do it now, and I think we take a measured approach, you know, it'll put us in great shape moving forward for the future. I would like to see us, you know, put out some sort of RFP for, or RFQ for the service and see, you know, who else may be out there, and evaluate those and select the best consultant for the job.
I make a motion that we, what, sorry, we approve an RFQ for procurement of services related to the city's geographic information system assessment and strategic plan for the city.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Item F is consideration of possible action to approve letting an RFQ for services related to the- to the review and development of the city's fees related to infrastructure development. You're up again?
I'll just hit the high, the high points here. Infrastructure development fees are necessary to help fund the city's infrastructure to support new developments. These fees are defined as being imposed against a new development to pay for the cost of capital improvements or facility expansion, city facility expansions, that are necessary by and benefit the new development. These fees are typically assessed at the time of final class recreation with the county or determined based on the size and guide of new development. Staff recommends that the city council approve advertising of an RFQ for special qualification. In order to select the appropriate engineering firm to perform the infrastructure development needs review for the city, the budget would be established at that point based on proposal from the selection for the top engineering firm. This is a subject we might consider discussing.
Since this is, yeah, I was gonna say, since this is related to economic development, is this something that we can move into executive session to discuss further?
As a matter of economic development, no, but if the council would like to seek the advice of its attorney.
Okay, as seeking the advice of its attorney is related to this, no, I, I would request that we move into executive session.
We'll move into executive session at 8:57 PM on agenda item F to seek the advice in council or our attorney. We're back from executive session at 9:24 PM. We are on agenda item number F. Is there any action that needs to be taken by council?
Mayor, make a motion to approve RFQ for services related to development of the city's fees related to construction development.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Item G is consideration and possible action to approve professional services agreement between the City of Pulcher and Randall Scott Architects for the provision of services related to a facilities needs assessment and master planning. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we entered into a study period with DHK Development at Pulcher Run, and so I'll let Mr. Ross give us the remaining information on this.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, in November of 2015, along those same lines, city council did select Randall Scott Architects as the consultant to perform the city's comprehensive facility needs assessment and long range facility master planning. RSA has submitted their proposal to perform these services and it is attached. A consultant also provided a proposal to perform a city hall needs assessment and create a city hall conceptual design, but staff is not recommending those services at this time. We feel it's important to get that needs assessment and long range facility master plan done first and then consider the next step, which would be more of a conceptual and detailed sign of a specific building like city hall. As you will see in the detailed proposal, the fees are as follows. $55,000 for the comprehensive facility needs assessment, $10,000 for the long range facility master plan, and a not to exceed amount of $5,000 for reimbursable expenses as listed in five C in the proposed proposal. Staff recommends that city council approve an expenditure up to $70,000 and accordingly authorize staff and the city attorney to prepare the standard contract with Randall Scott Architects for execution by the mayor. Funds are approved and available for use in the facilities master planning account within the capital budget, capital projects budget.
If you remember also, we had a RFQ for these services. Council reviewed those, select Randall Scott Architects. Does someone here from Randall Scott?
Randall Scott, yes.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for being here. That'll open it up for any council questions or comments or a motion.
Mayor, on reviewing this, this scope work, it was my understanding that we were going to design a, or get an RFQ for someone to tell us our comprehensive facility needs and assessment and what we would need for 10, 15, 20 year range. I did not think that that included concept work.
And we removed that from the, we negotiated that out of the, out of the proposal, and so the costs reflect only the comprehensive needs assessment, the long range facility plan, and then expenses related to the production of those documents by Mr. Scott's staff.
Okay, so is that different than what I'm reading in the conceptual site, block floor plans for each facility under section nine B, nine C?
I'll defer to Michael and Mr. Scott. Number nine C at the top of page two, the general scope and deliverables for the comprehensive facility needs assessment and facilities master plan would include assisting in identifying and vetting a limited number of potential building sites, preparation of high level preliminary program requirements, developing conceptual site and block floor plans for each facility. Can you kind of explain?
Sure. So the intent would be to spend time with staff determining what the needs are for each of the different project types, where the best use of those would be located within the city boundaries, and to do some, we call them block floor plans, they're not full blown, full blown floor plans, they're actually blocks of space that show the affinity relationships between departments and approximately how the building might lay out. So it's not a fully detailed floor plan.
So it's not like conceptual analysis? I mean, I know that's the service that your company offers. I just think they're really over, and I kind of make sure that's the fine scope of work, that we just are getting a roadmap of where we need to go.
Yes, that's exactly right.
I'd like to move that we approve a professional services agreement between the City of Pulcher and Randall Scott Architects for the provision of services related to the facilities needs assessment and master plan.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Scott, now that you're here in our existing city hall, you can see why we're exploring space options.
We can help you with that.
Our building official has tried to condemn us out of this building more than once. We look forward to working with you. All those in favor say aye. All opposed?
I agree. We look forward to working with you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item H is consideration and possible action to approve amendment to the city's vehicle use policy allowing the provision of automobile allowances for certain executive staff.
Back in 2013, the city authorized a vehicle use policy. When we brought Mr. Ross on board, we had provisioned in the budget $17,500 for the procurement of a vehicle that would be owned by the city and used by him for his personal use under that vehicle use policy. We did some research and discussed about the potential for providing a stipend and lieu. We had that discussion back in 2013, and at that time, it was a personal decision made by me that I didn't think that that's the route I wanted to go for mine. Mr. Ross felt like it might be the route that he would like to go, so we studied with other cities we're doing. For his level of executive staff, that monthly stipend is about $600, and we would recommend or staff recommends that we go ahead and adopt the revision to the vehicle use policy. It's highlighted in italics at the very end. They'll allow the payment of $600 stipend to assistant city managers for the use of a vehicle and keep them out from owning the car vehicle outright by the city. This would lead to an initial savings, initial budget of about $10,000, but it would be an ongoing expense going into next in the future years' budgets.
We'll turn it up for questions or comments.
I make a motion to approve amendment to the city's vehicle use policy allowing for provision of automobile allowances for certain executive staff.
You have a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Questions?
Only question I have is like going forward with other employees that have vehicle use privileges, if they will be able to protect the same thing, and with other positions that we have come forward that vehicles that we provide in here, they would be subject to be able to.
Yeah, in the future, we would open it up for others. Other cities have adopted a chart. We've never had another, we've always just fought for the staff, but we can definitely look into doing that in other more staff and looking at what that general tier is in other cities as well.
My question was, is, do we have a procedure or mechanism for making the election and can that be changed at certain points?
That's a great question. Right now, the flexibility lies with my office.
Right, it says shall be determined by you.
Yeah.
I just didn't, that wasn't really addressed, and I know we're looking for a short term.
Yeah, typically what we would do is on an offer of employment, because we don't have a contractual relationship with any manager at this time, on the offer of employment, that's where that would be clarified. In going forward, if we move to more to contractual agreements with administrative staff and executive staff, we build those into this conference.
That's something that needs to be referenced in this document.
Got this question? Does leave be referenced in the document? Is always clear if it is? You still approve the policy, you just amend the document?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the pending motion that we adopt the city vehicle use policy allowing for provision of automobile allowances for certain executive staff with the amendment that we delineate how the election process is made on whether they're going to have city provided or allowance elections made and the provision of on that, the timing of that provision for election.
We have an amendment on the floor to delineate how the election is made and the details pertaining to that with the second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. All opposed? The amendment passes. Now we have our main motion on the table to approve the new city use policy with the amendment. Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Item I is consideration and possible action to approve dedication of roadway from Pulcher Mud Number Two to the city for improvement of Bodark Lane South from 1093.
Yay-hoo.
We recommend approval of that dedication of that roadway from the mud to the city.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. Is this the holdup for construction?
I'm looking for that. I didn't hide it, I didn't elaborate.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. J is consideration and possible action to award bid to Shear, Shear Construction Company for the installation of pumps and other apparatus related to the expansion of City of Pulcher Water Plant Number One.
And I believe E has laid out the tabulation signed by David. Yes, man.
Got that one.
It's got the, it looks like an email on the top. We initially budgeted, initially budgeted this, a total budget of $1.68 million related to the construction of the improvements at Water Plant Number One. We estimated this project to run at between $700 and $750,000 for the installation of the pumps, the well, the contact chamber, and everything that goes along with that. The bid, as you see, came in significantly lower, $546,500, with contingencies up to, I want to say, $658,000, so we're still about $100,000, $50,000 to $100,000 under budget, what we anticipated the expenditure to be. And staff recommends the approval of this, of this bid, rewarding of the bid so we can get the contract and finish phase three, and we think we might actually get everything done if we get this done tonight ahead of schedule, which would be awesome.
Make a motion to approve the possible action to bid to Shear Construction Company.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments about David's recommendation? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Item K is consideration and possible action to approve annexation of a certain 23.44 acre tract of land into Horpene County Mud 171 on petition from the Horpene County Municipal Utility District Number 171 for the Most Reverend Daniel Cardinal Donardo, Archbishop of Gallaston, Houston.
Can we get a resolution number on this?
Oh, it will be 298.
Okay, so moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. I think we've seen this through a long process. We're ready to, already broken ground, so all those in favor say aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Item 10 is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. We're adjourned at 9:38 PM.